Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Call this meeting to order, and if you would stand, I'll ask Councilman Hux to offer our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. For Jesus, we come to you tonight to give thanks for our city, our country, and the many freedoms that you blessed us with. Help us to be mindful of the service and the sacrifice of those that have come for us. Help us to honor that service and sacrifice by doing our civic duty and fulfilling our civic responsibilities. Please lead us as we govern this city and help us to do it in a manner that pleases you. In Christ's name, we pray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the common good which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Next item on our agenda is a special presentation. Looking forward to doing this one for Buddy Green and Pat Green and for all of the volunteers that serve this community through the food bank. So if those folks will join me at the podium, whatever volunteers can... If we get everybody together.
There you go.
Very choice. Ladies and gentlemen, I do have the distinct honor and certainly privilege not only to recognize but to commend and pay tribute to those individuals who have worked so hard and so diligently, making sure that those here in our community are not left behind as we continue to endure this pandemic. I had the pleasure, and it was a pleasure, of working at the food bank about a month ago. To be honest, I had no idea how many families in our city were desperate for just a box of food. It broke my heart. It broke the heart of those who were working with me, especially when you place a box of food in the backseat of someone that you've known all your life. The food bank of Pecosin is really the only light that many of our citizens see over a month. So when you actually observe the line of cars and you see the despair on the faces of our fellow citizens, and I might add the smallest smile that crosses their faces as they receive basic food, thanks to those folks who are here with us tonight. This city, our citizens, have always answered the call for the needy, and that's who we are about, and that's how it is. So I want to encourage all of our citizens to experience what I experienced the day I worked at the food bank. Please be part of this dedicated and amazing group. We are not looking for pats on the back, not looking for the names to be in the newspaper, not looking for many accolades that they so much deserve. The only goal is to feed our neighbors, to feed our friends who have fallen on hard times. We simply cannot allow our fellow citizens to be hungry. The food bank and those who are faithful to its operation deserve our help, and more importantly, they need our prayers as they take care of every family that depends on the food bank for assistance. I personally never thought I would see children smiling because of a box of food or a gallon of milk. This gallon of milk being placed in the backseat with a child. I personally never thought that I would see in the eyes of the recipients the despair that was so obvious. I went home a better person. I went home humbled by the volunteers who are playing such a tremendous role in making those who are struggling receive the food that they need to survive. So Buddy, to you and Pat, and to all of the volunteers who with us tonight and those who could not be here tonight, we're truly in your debt, and I'm convinced the citizens of Pecosin will heed the call. So Buddy, for you and Pat, I'd like to present this to both of you, presented to Buddy and Pat Green in grateful appreciation of your many years of outstanding service to the food bank for the city of Pecosin since 2012. So this plaque is in grateful appreciation of your many years of outstanding service to the food bank for the city of Pecosin, and the names on here are Tom and Sally Stevens, Debbie Snyder, Ed and Sherry Harper, Sis Ambrose, Mike and Sharon Stevens, and Penny Valentine. And I'm going to present it to you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My pleasure, Buddy. I'm sure it won't come to any surprise to any of you that the brains of the outfit is standing to my left. Pat runs it, keeps all the records. I'm just there to lift the boxes, and sometimes I don't do a very good job of that. So I'm going to turn it over to my lovely wife, Pat.
Thank you, Bud. Of course, I have a few choice words to say. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all of our council members. Little did we know 10 years ago that the city of Pecosin would be the parents to a food bank distribution that would serve Lower York County and the city of Pecosin. Your fellow council member and my husband, Buddy Green, attended a food bank-sponsored work day for area elected officials, and bingo, a child was born. It was explained that the city and the Lower York County was an area underserved by the Peninsula Food Bank, and they wanted to know if there was an organization in the area willing to sponsor a food distribution. So without hesitation, a meeting was arranged with city officials who welcomed this infant with open arms. The Exchange Club of Pecosin joined in the efforts to get the ball rolling, and within two months, the first food bank distribution occurred in February of 2011, 10 years ago. What a journey it has been. We have served as many as 112 families in any one month that equated to about 400 individuals, and I might add 100 very, very grateful families. We have seen a number of people move on to meet their heavenly father, as well as a million-dollar jackpot winner who went on to a much more enriched life. There have been medical bills and prescriptions paid, gas money given out, rent paid, and numerous household repairs made by this awesome group of people that you see standing here. We also formed a delivery team to take food to those without transportation or those who are homebound, and I might add to their horn a little bit, we are the only food pantry that does that. We even did it during the pandemic, the best that we could. This, our core group, as we call ourselves, was meant to be congregating behind the Parks and Rec Building every fourth Tuesday of the month, greeting many people who we now call, many of them, our friends, and distributing boxes from the food bank. I'd like to introduce in alphabetical order this dedicated group that makes the wheels turn. Sis Ambrose, Sherry and Ed Harper, Sharon and Mike Stevens, Sally and Tom Stevens, and we have two people, Debbie Schneider and Penny Valentine, who were not able to be with us tonight. I would be remiss not to mention the incredible support the city of Pecosin has provided for this mission. Monthly reminder letters are mailed to our list of regular attendees. Thank you, Ms. Kim. And thanks to all the efficient people that assist our city manager. I'd like to add that our food pantry is the only one in this area that is sponsored by a city. Most all others are sponsored by churches or community organizations. Funding comes from our area civic organizations and individuals interested in supporting those with food insufficiency. We have a group every month, one or two groups every month, that assist us, trying to involve as many people as we possibly can throughout the area. The organizations that assist us on a monthly basis are the Virginia Peninsula Associate of Realtors, the Pecosin City Staff, Pecosin Exchange Club, Pecosin Yacht Club, St. Timothy's Anglican Church, Cabernacle United Methodist Church, Pecosin Kiwanis Club, Pecosin Lions Club, American Legion Post 273, Emes Baptist Church, Pecosin Masonic Lodge Number 49, Pecosin Women's Club, the Pecosin Garden Club, and the York Pecosin Social Services, and Kirkwood Presbyterian Church. With this extraordinary group of organizations having our back, you can understand why we look so good. We've been accused of being a well-oiled machine, which we gladly accept, and with the backing of so many great people and 10 years of experience, our machine rolls on. The gratitude we receive each month is our oil, and the enthusiasm of our volunteers keeps us rolling. Thank you for this honor and for your generous support.
All right, Mr. Wheeler, would you like to introduce the introduction?
I would. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you, Mr. Mayor, and to council and our public, and invite him to come to the podium, our new city engineer, Mr. Sean Crawford. Sean comes to us most recently from VDOT, and I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself and how his experience is the first eight days on the job.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Sean.
My name is Sean Crawford and I have the great privilege of being the new city engineer for the city of Pecosin. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Virginia. As Mr. Wheeler said, most recently, my time has been with VDOT in the state. I'm an alumni of Old Dominion University proudly. I also attended Thomas Nelson Community College. My background is in construction as well as transportation. Socially, I have a beautiful son who just turned one recently, as well as a loving and beautiful family that have my full support as I move forward in this new position. Pecosin is a really special place to me. I still have a grandmother that lives here, aunts and uncles all over the place. I grew up running through the marshes, playing in the ditches as I was watched as a schoolboy. The first week here has been actually outstanding. I've got to go see the projects that are ongoing, meet some citizens, get involved with the community, hear their input, and try to use those ideas to bring back new innovative ways to keep projects on task, on budget, moving forward for the citizens of Pecosin. It'll be my honor serving as the city engineer in this position, and I hope to learn, grow, and be a good steward for all the citizens of Pecosin. So with that, I thank you, and I look forward to working with everybody here. Thanks.
Sean, welcome aboard, my man. And you found out over the last eight days that you're working with a staff that's second to none in the Commonwealth. So we're glad to have you. All right, audience for visitors, if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd love to hear from you. Seeing none, let's move on to the approval of minutes for our regular session, May 10, 2021.
I move that we approve our minutes of the regular session of May the 10th, 2021.
Have a motion being seconded. Will we adopt those minutes? Any concerns, comments regarding the minutes? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Kim, thank you. Move on to our MFF public hearings. The first one on our list is an ordinance of menning the city zoning ordinance to modify Section 1-3 and Section 10-2 permitted and conditional uses. And I believe our former councilman and our new city employee, Mr. Thomas Mello, is going to do this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, nice to see you. Glad to be here with you tonight in my new capacity. Tonight, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you and the manager, I'm going to cover both of your public hearings in one presentation.
Sure.
Try and be brief and tell you what I've got for you tonight. Mr. Mayor, new business tonight deals with zoning ordinance change, and I'll cover that one first. Anyways, that's changing part of the code. I'll give you a little background on it. If you'll remember, October 2020, council approved a conditional use permit for Pecosin Farmers Market, which is held on Victory by Victory Church. The Plan Commission noted that the existing definition of Farmers Market was narrow and didn't necessarily apply to what was going on. The ordinance was changed, was discussed, the ordinance changes were discussed, and they're January, March meetings, and recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero in April. The first part of the change, Mr. Mayor, is removing the existing definition of Farmers Market from the ordinance. The second part of that is replacing it with the new definition of open-air market, which I'm sure you've all had a time to read, and this fits closer with what's going on in that conditional use permit. This is our zoning change, and this change, Mr. Mayor, we're just striking the word "market" because it doesn't apply anymore, seeing that we're getting rid of the definition. And that's the only change, nothing substantive, just inserting fruit or produce stand in place of market simply to allow current businesses who may use, actually use a fruit or produce stand, that'd still be able to do that. The other change is striking flea markets from the ordinance and inserting open-air markets. That's our new definition. And I can, I've got one more to talk about that I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Thomas?
All right. The change of the conditional use permit, Mr. Mayor, is just making a modification to the ones you passed in October to better reflect our new definition change. All approved conditions remain the same. Again, nothing substantive, more housekeeping. And this is the change reflected in the conditional use permit. Danon reached out to the folks who applied for the permit, and they were fine with the modification, and that's reflected here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions of Thomas regarding the second public hearing?
I've got one in general, Mr. Mayor. Does that affect anything civic organizations do, set up various sales around the city?
No, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor, this is just making the definitional change and modifying the conditional use permit for Victory Church.
Any other questions? Okay, Thomas, thank you very much. Well done. All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience that would like to address changes and the modifications permitted and conditional use permits. I don't hear any, so we'll close the public hearing.
I move that we adopt an ordinance of menning the city zoning ordinance by modifying Section 1-3 definitions and Section 10-2 permitted and conditional uses.
Second. All right, we have a motion second. Did we adopt that ordinance? Any concerns, comments from council? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Let's move on to the second resolution, or the second public hearing, resolution approving amendments to a conditional use permit for the establishment of a Farmers Market at Zero Victory Boulevard. I don't need to give you the tax map number. We will open the public hearing and ask if anybody has any concerns or comments regarding that resolution. If not, motion, please.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving amendments to a conditional use permit for the establishment of a Farmers Market at Zero Victory Boulevard, Tax MAC Parcel Number 18-1-121.
Okay, thank you, Buddy. Second. All right, have a motion being seconded. We adopt the resolutions. Any comments, concerns? None? Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall. Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. And the third and final public hearing has to do with school board appointments. I'll ask Mr. Wheeler, if he's got some comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is really for the benefit of those that may be in the audience or listening at home. Council's certainly aware of this. But the process before us this evening is the process the city council uses to fill full terms to the school board. We have up this evening, or at the end of June, three terms that are expiring, one for the Eastern District, one for the Central District, and the Outlaward Spot. At the previous council meeting, we made a public announcement to begin to formally solicit interest. We put that out on our social media and our website and also in the newspaper, and we have asked folks to provide us a board bank application. We currently have 15. This, a public hearing this evening, is an opportunity for us to formally place into consideration the names of those 15 people. So once the hearing is open, we would appreciate it if you'd allow the clerk the opportunity to formally read the name, the district. Also during that public hearing is an opportunity for any other person that may wish to place their name or the name of someone else who is qualified to serve and interested into consideration. Also, city council members can place the name of someone into consideration as well. At the conclusion of that process, of the public hearing, when the public hearing is closed, then those will be all the names that will be considered during this formal process for the full-term appointments. As I stated previously, there are currently 15, and if that's all right, we'll, once you open the public hearing, we'll ask the city clerk to read their, those 15 names, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir. Thank you. And we will open the public hearing and ask Ms. Kim if she would read those names.
Craig Freeman, Western. Bernard Wright, Western. Kathy Everett, Western. Michael Ship, Western. Jonathan Ingram, Central. Shannon Martin, Central. David Blackstock, Central. Crystal Hauser, Central. Mary Powell, Central. Dawn Ide, Eastern. Joseph Chapazie, Eastern. Joseph Cameron, Eastern. Anna Ward is Eastern. Timothy Goodall, Eastern, and Cameron Childress, Eastern.
Okay, Kim, thank you. Any names from council? Any names from our audience? Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. There's no action required. Is that right, Mr. Wheeler?
That's correct, sir.
So let's move on to new business. An ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2021 in the general fund, local donations, state aid, state and federal grants. Do you want to comment on that?
I would, so I recognize Robin Bellamy, who's our acting finance director, given an opportunity to come up and present and answer any questions you may have.
All right.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. So attached to the ordinance, making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2021 in the general fund for local donations, state aid, state and federal grants. We have various amounts for the police department, the fire department, and the library, and the litter control grant, in the total amount of $60,568. If you have any, try to answer any questions.
Any questions of Robin? Robin, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Looking for a motion.
We adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2021 in the general fund as outlined by the...
Okay, Buddy. All right, thank you very much. Any concerns, comments from either members of council? Anybody? Okay, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
By a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Comments to city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things to update council and the public on. While there was no action required or contemplated for the school board appointments, just in case people are curious, it's anticipated that the city council will make those appointments at its June 14 meeting. If we get to June 14 and the council's not quite ready, we'll continue on to another meeting. But just for folks that might be interested, when those appointments are likely to be made, June 14. Would note to council and the community that the Pecosin Avenue Sidewalk Project Phase 1 is well underway and is approximately 50% complete based on our time by today. So that's what you're seeing, and I apologize the disruption. The folks are seeing, but I think they're doing a real good job of managing traffic flow there. I haven't noticed anything that would be much of an inconvenience for folks. I hope that that's everyone else's experience as well. Today, I noted something has been a while in coming, which is they began the demolition in earnest of the old BB&amp;T bank building. We've had the fence for a while and the silt fence for a while, but today they actually started dismantling the building. So I note that to you. And last item, I just want to thank a number of people, Riverside Health System, the school district, our own folks, to include Michael and Gretchen, for working together on a vaccination clinic that they did last week at Pecosin High School. Did, were able to vaccinate almost 140 Pecosin young people, and I think we even got a couple of parents. Along the way, there is, the second dose clinic is June 9, but they're also going to have some opportunity to do some first doses for anyone in the school community, including their parents who might need a vaccination. You can get that information with Dr. Ryer or in the schools, or if you would prefer, you can just give us a call and we'll get you hooked up with the right people. But it was the first clinic of scale that was conducted in the city of Pecosin. As you know, mostly what we've been doing has been in partnership with our neighbors. And I would also note that a private group, the Williamsburg Drug Company, is planning vaccination clinic at the Shody Oaks Mobile Home Park on June 3, which is a Thursday in the afternoon. Now, while it is primarily focused on the residents of that area, it's also open to anyone else in Pecosin that may need vaccination. So there's information available. The phone number is 757-778-4638. But as always, if that's something that you're interested in, if the city manager's office calls, we'll be glad to put you in touch with the right people. Pre-registration is required for... That's all I have, sir.
All right, Mr. Wheeler, thank you so much. See if council has some directives. Mr. Southall?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to offer my personal thanks and congratulations to Buddy and Pat Green. They have done a phenomenal job. All the things you said, Mr. Mayor, were correct, and it goes beyond that. I'd also like to thank the volunteers who work with them, and it makes me proud to be the city that supports the food bank, not having to be a civic organization. All the things you said, Mr. Mayor, were correct, and it goes beyond that. Also, I'd like to thank the volunteers who worked with them, and it makes me proud to be the city that supports the food bank, not having to be a civic organization. I'd like to welcome Sean Crawford to the city of Pecosin in his new position. Welcome Thomas Canelo in his new position, and thank all the citizens who come out here tonight, who come out tonight, and for those at home who pay attention to their city government, because that's more important than most people believe. And I'd like to thank the city manager again, Randall Wheeler. He and his staff have done a phenomenal job for the city.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Janet?
I always like going after Bud because he says everything for me. So I concur with everything he says, and just wanted to thank our, you know, fire department because, and police department, it looks like a lot of the money we received was from grants, so they're still doing hard work, earning money for themselves, which is commendable for them, so I just wanted to recognize them for that.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Davy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About a year ago, Vice Mayor Freeman made an excellent suggestion that was thoroughly received, and after speaking with him recently, he asked me if I would resurrect that suggestion this year. Vice Mayor's suggestion last year, of course, during the summer council meeting schedule for us to adopt our summer uniforms, which consist of our city polo shirts or Oxford shirts, and on behalf of the vice mayor, I'd like to make that suggestion for the summer schedule this month and ask if we could get members of council to support that.
I think it's done. It's done. All right, that's done. Buddy?
Just like to echo what Bud said about everybody and welcome Sean. Also, to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Mobile Food Pantry Day at the Old City Hall from 10 to 1. Our host this time is the Kiwanis Club of Pecosin.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Next Monday, May the 31st, Memorial Day, American Legion will have a Memorial Day ceremony right out here in front of City Hall at the War Memorial Monument, as we call it, and mostly, Councilman Hux got that fixed up really, really nice. It will start at 10 o'clock, and we'd like to invite everybody to come out.
It's a really important day.
It is.
It's a really important day, and I would encourage anybody that's in the city that, if you can, to attend that service and pay some, pay respect to those folks who gave their lives serving in some sort of combat for this country. Carrie, they always do a good job, a really good job. Okay. Anything else? If not, we do have a closed session. If someone will take us there, I appreciate it.
May I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss appointments for the board and city council.
Second. All right. We have a motion being seconded. We'll go to closed session. Ms. Kemp, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.